We call this meeting the Oscar Lusa Council Order. Today is Monday, December 21st, 2015. Would you rise and join me with the invocation? Heavenly Father, as we assemble here tonight, we thank you for the blessing of the people in this room. We have all felt your call to be part of the future of Oscar Lusa and acknowledge the need for your guidance. For the council members and staff here, we ask that you bless us. Give us quiet and considerate attitudes, well-thought-out deliberations, and ultimately decisions that are best for the long-term future of the city of Oscar Lusa. We thank you for those in the audience here and watching on broadcasts. We thank you for leaders of businesses and organizations who have the vision and commitment to help the city. The countless volunteers who are motivated to help. And for informed citizens who have given us the privilege of their trust and support. Tonight, we've assembled a group of people who are making a difference in the long-term future of Oscar Lusa. May the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight. Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zett?
Yes.
First State?
Yes.
Walling?
Here.
Yates?
Here. First item up?
Actually, the call is not until the first of February this year.
That's a sweet chime. I don't know whose it is.
Well, we can meet later.
That's not only ring off because I forgot. Somebody would call me if I did. First item up is the community comments. The site was we talked to. We see comments from the community for concerns, whether or not they're on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council, but we ask that you keep your statements brief because time will be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of city staff, council members, or mayor, we ask that that be done prior to speaking to the full council so that way concerns could be properly researched and perhaps even answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Name and if you live in the city limits, please.
I do not live in the city limits. Blaine Voss, 2346 Patriot Avenue. I am here tonight in my role with the Oscar Lusa Farmers Market. Just wanted to give you a little update. We did the street closure. We granted that permit this past year. And there wasn't anything tremendously -- no tremendous increase in sales or anything of that nature, but it was a very stable environment for us. We felt pretty safe and secure. There weren't any traffic incidents or things of that nature. And we did appreciate the stability that it provided for us. Our sales were about the same, and so we can build on that. Really didn't hear -- there was always complaints, but there wasn't a significant amount of complaints and didn't really hear a little bit about inconvenience, you know, for the courthouse workers, but no direct complaints were lodged with vendors or myself. One thing we did this year was we engaged the 4H. Kids who were involved with horticulture had a chance to come up and put up a booth and sell their product with us, so we had about a dozen kids do that. And that was a lot of fun, kind of looking towards the next generation. But we just -- a brief review for what we did. We hope to come back and do the same thing this coming year and appreciate your support.
Blaine, I was going to ask you, but you brought it up. But I'd never heard anything more after we got started about the road issue. Did you still have some trouble having that much of the road closed? Because I never heard after you got it going, anything about it.
Yeah, that was our experience also. We had about six vendors. Sometimes we had 10 vendors. We'd split and put three on each side. And as far as other than putting the barriers up ourselves, that little bit of extra work was the only complaint I had. But no, we didn't have any trouble with that.
Who used to put the barriers up?
We -- the vendors do that.
Thank you.
Their responsibility. And it worked out really well with the city as we kind of adjusted, and it was very convenient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Blaine.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Seeing none, I'll move on. Next one is to consider a resolution of appreciation for Fourth Ward City Council Member Jason Ben Zett. Jason has served as the Fourth Ward City Council Member since January 1st of 2012, and there's a resolution to recognize Jason for his service to the city of Oscar Lusa. I'd like to read it out. The way the resolution of appreciation reads is whereas, as a member of the city council of the city of Oscar Lusa, Iowa, from January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2015, Jason Ben Zettin has served the city of Oscar Lusa with honor and distinction, and by his conduct and high sense of public trust, has earned the respect and appreciation of the citizens of the city of Oscar Lusa. And whereas Jason Ben Zettin provided leadership to guide the city by his service on the Public Projects Committee, Planning Committee, and as liaison to the Oscar Lusa Municipal Water Board, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Oscar Lusa, Iowa. In a meeting assembled the 21st day of December, 2015, by the adoption of this resolution, permanently record sincere appreciation for the service rendered by Jason Ben Zettin as a member of the Oscar Lusa City Council and for the privilege that has been ours to have served with him, do have a motion for approval.
Shall move.
Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zettin?
Can I vote on myself?
Yes.
You can't sustain.
First State?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caljerry?
Okay, that passes. So there's also a plaque that goes with this that reads exactly what I'd read out before. So Jason, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
I expect bigger and better things out of you, Jason, at the state level.
Okay, sir.
Next item up is the consent agenda. These are all items that are considered routine in nature. There's not a lot of discussion expected. I withdraw the council's attention to item G, where we're appointing Jennifer Main to the Stephen Memorial Animal Shelter Commission. Item H, where we're appointing Kevin Tack to the water board. Item I, where we're going to be appointing Adam Harrelson, actually reappointing him to the Historic Preservation Commission. And then also item J, where there's a public hearing that we're scheduling on January 4th, 2016 regarding the fire department renovation and expansion project. Do we have a motion for approval?
Shall we?
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zettin?
Yes.
First State?
Yes.
Walling?
Okay.
Yates?
Yes.
Caljerry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Too fast for me.
Getting into the regular agenda. First item is a public hearing, after which we'll consider a resolution approving the offer and sale of the property owned by the city of Oscar Lusa, located at 717 A Avenue East and 603 A Avenue East, to Terry Anderson, in the amount of $1,500. Mr. Anderson has indicated the property located at 717 A Avenue East will be rehabilitated and the structure at 603 A Avenue East will be demolished, with the intention to build a new, single-story, single-family house within two years. So a public hearing is required prior to the city council taking official action on this item. The public hearing allows the city to receive comments on the proposed sale, as well as any additional offers for the acquisition of the properties. The city is the holder of record title to the property located at 717 A Avenue East in Oscar Lusa. Legal description is the south 136 and 1/2 feet of the east 85 feet of Lot 1 of the northwest corner of the southwest corner of Section 18, Township 75, Range 15, in Mahaska County, Iowa. And at 603 A Avenue East in Oscar Lusa, the legal description is just Lot 3, Block 6, a bear's addition to the city of Oscar Lusa. Staff has received an offer in the amount of $1,500 from Mr. Terry Anderson. He's the owner of TJ A Construction to purchase the properties for development, rehabilitating the property at 717 A Avenue East into two units, and then demolishing the structure at 603 A Avenue East for a new, single-story, single-family house in the property within two years. So I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would care to speak to this?
Jeremy Durand, I believe, in the county. I also have an interest of those locations and would like to offer $2,500 for that and have the same intent of doing the same.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time? Okay?
I guess just from my point of order, since Mr. Anderson's here, I would be curious to know if he would like to provide an additional offer, because I think what we can do at this point is open it up for almost a bidding if -- now, Terry may not be ready for that, but that's what we can do.
Okay.
It's up to the council.
Yep. And the time -- since the floor is open, this would be the time for doing such thing. Mr. Anderson, would you care to?
I'm not going to make any additional offers. You know, we've made our offer. Jeremy's made an additional offer, and it's up to the best interest of the city to get rid of the properties and develop them. So that's all I've got to say.
Thanks, Jeremy. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
To accept the second offer?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, to Mr. Durand. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I got a question. It says we're going to give them two years. I'm okay with two years to build, but can we have it torn down sooner than that?
Absolutely.
Seems to be prudent. I mean, I already thanked Terry for getting rid of one of the biggest ice horses in Oscar Lusa here this last month, so I just -- getting them down is a big step in beautification, so.
Mr. Durand, when do you think you might be able to get them down?
Only one to go down.
Only one?
This is small.
Yeah, this is small, okay. That's right.
This should be less than a year.
Is this the normal procedure for this? Because this is the first time that I've seen this since I've been up here in four years. And with all due respect to Mr. Anderson, to turn this into a bidding war when he was not expecting that really isn't fair. I would say that, you know, at least table this and give somebody some time to see what they can put together on this deal.
Well, that's the idea of the public hearing. That's what Mr. Durand came to the public hearing for.
Turn it into an auction?
Well, basically, yes.
Well, yeah, but how many times are you going to let him overbid? If, okay, Terry obviously bid, he bid first. If he bids, does Jeremy get to -- you know, we aren't going to hold an auction.
Absolutely. But it didn't happen. It didn't happen, so it's over.
Yeah, well, I kind of agree since Terry backed off, but, you know, we're not going to sit here and get an auction.
Jeremy's a very well-qualified developer here and builder in Oscar Lusa also, and he'll do a good job. At this point, if it makes it clear, I will withdraw my offer.
Okay. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, as discussed before, there are two options for disposal of property. We could do sealed bids, or we could do what we've done right now, which is essentially just hold a public hearing and then consider offers. So those are the two options that are available to us. Have we done this before? Not in the six and a half years that I've been here. But we also haven't been in a position to facilitate as many transactions as we have because we've been enforcing the codes a little bit more strictly with an emphasis on either acquiring these properties or demolishing them. So it is a little bit different for us. If the council would prefer that we would set a bid where we have sealed bids and then qualified individuals submit their highest and best offer, we could do that. But given that we were just asked if the properties were for sale, my immediate response is yes, I don't want these liabilities. Bring me your best offer, and then we can go through the more formal process, which is this one. But I'm certainly willing, if you have a preference to do it differently in the future, that would be good to hear because we are going to acquire a few more of these properties over time.
Well, rather than have an auction up here, I think we'd rather see a sealed bid on it and go from there.
I'd agree.
Do you want to amend the motion to have a state that be torn down within 12 months? I don't know who made the motion.
I did. I posed the question.
First State?
I made the motion, yes.
And Moore or Yates with the second?
Yes, I'll amend it.
Before that is done, can I offer a couple other things? Typically, there are stipulations that are made with the property. Regardless of who is going to purchase it, one of the stipulations that I would encourage the council to consider adding to this transaction would be the payment of any weed assessments, any assessments that might be due that the city imposed as a result of work that we completed. I believe both of these properties have weed assessments on them. 717, I believe, also has back taxes that would be owed. So there are those types of stipulations that I would ask that the council consider adding to the sale of the property.
Did you know any of this?
No.
Do you have a problem with any of that? You might, depending on what those back taxes are.
Yeah, that's true.
Again, that would be available through the assessor's office. I don't have that information offhand right now.
Well, and there's one other point. According to Terry's letter to us, there is asbestos in one of those homes. He -- the point is he knows it. Do you know it, Jeremy?
I don't know which one.
Okay, but, you know, there'd be an abatement process, yeah.
I guess in due respect to both of these guys, there really ought to be a better system than this. You know, we're changing stuff at last minute, you know.
I just thought all that stuff would already be here on the table, that, you know, back taxes and all that stuff. You don't have any of that information, huh?
Not on here, no. I mean, it's either that or the city gets stuck paying the back taxes.
Did Mr. Anderson know that, part of this?
Does this change anything with you?
It would be nice to know if we're going to get stuff paid. I mean, I'd like to know what it is. I mean--
Because here's -- we got a motion and a second, and your offer's on the table. So if it doesn't get defeated, you could get stuck with it.
He still would have to sign. He still has to sign. It doesn't mean he's forced to complete the transaction. I mean, I guess that's the thing. If the offer goes through, there would still be an opportunity for Mr. Durand to get the full amount and then say yes or no, or you can come back.
I read them.
So you should still withdraw.
Isn't it on these sheets that's in the packet what the taxes are?
Yeah, I read it.
But how many?
How many years hasn't it been paid? Yeah.
That's just the annual.
Okay.
Right. It looks like it hasn't been paid for a year, which would be about $1,200.
So if these back taxes are absorbing it, he can still say, oh, thank you.
So this is not legally binding for him?
No, it just allows us to execute an agreement with them.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that he can 100% walk away from the motion. Okay. That's on camera, so.
Little bitty guy, he's going to tear it down.
Does that mean on camera? No.
So were you following that?
Did you get it all?
Yeah, I got it all.
Okay, so is that motion okay?
Yes, the motion's okay. He has to have the one property tore down in a year if this goes through, right?
Yep, and the back taxes and city fees.
The back taxes all have to be paid up, but he can back out once he finds out what the amount is.
Okay, sounds good. This is our second.
I got one other point.
What'd you say?
On both properties? Correct.
Correct. It would just be the 717 one.
Okay. Who did the second?
I did.
Okay, you okay with that as well?
Yes.
Okay. Any further conversation?
Yeah, one more. At the end of the last meeting, I mentioned about this property. If what we're -- if anybody had any strong feelings about whether we want multiple residential housing on the corridors. They're both, I think, Jeremy, are you building -- would you build apartments in that big house, or would you single?
Yeah. Could be duplexes.
Okay. Did any of you -- I'm not pushing one way or the other. It was just a point brought up. I said I got a call about it. You know, it's like, okay, does make some sense, but per, you know, generally, I wouldn't want to live on A Avenue, so I'm not sure it would sell as a single dwelling, but it's probably what it's going to be.
Some of the properties on the corridors were originally built as duplexes. 717 A Avenue East was originally built as a two-family home. That cannot be converted into a single-family home. The exits are both on the exterior side of the front porch in the back. So I understand what you're saying about not having multifamily on the corridors, but a lot of the houses, when they were built, were built as two and three and four family homes.
Interesting point, Terry, so.
From a zoning perspective, staff would still recommend that we would have multifamily along the corridors, just because of the traffic, the higher intensity uses. That's a little more sound in the practice.
And it does take more off-road parking, right?
There's no on-road parking there, so it's--
You would have to be provided on-site, correct.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Ben Zettin?
Yes.
First State?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caljerry?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zettin?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Item B, another public hearing. Consider resolution levying a special assessment against private property for cutting and removal of weeds by the city of Oscar Lusa in accordance with Title 8, Chapter 8.20 of the City Code of the city of Oscar Lusa. This is the time for the public hearing, levying a special assessment against private property. There are five properties outlined in Exhibit A. Certified notices were sent to each property owner. A notice was published in the Oscar Lusa Herald, and if approved, the property owner has 30 days to pay for the weed cutting in the city clerk's office. After the 30 days, it's assessed on the property taxes with a payment schedule of one year, 9% interest. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would care to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close it. Do we have a motion supporting the resolution for the special assessment?
Shall we?
Okay, any discussion?
Do we own the property at 115 Fifth Avenue West yet? We sure assess a lot of mowing to it.
That's one definitely these guys should look at, get a hold of it.
That's one we are working on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that would be one that, yes.
Any further conversation? Roll call.
First State?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caljerry?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zettin?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Next item is discussion. Yeah, I don't know that we anticipate any action on the potential renewal of the city's local option sales tax and services tax. It is set to expire on December 31st of 2016. This item is reserved to continue the previous discussions about the potential renewal of the local option sales and services tax. So anyway, I don't anticipate doing any ballot language tonight. Mike, would you be willing to give us an update on the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning?
Sure. Mayor and council, as you're aware, a petition was submitted by a group that is interested in seeing the recreation center come to fruition, also see investment in infrastructure and the environmental learning center. The group gathered almost 1,000 signatures. Not all of those were necessarily official because the petition was turned in last week, but about 1,000 as of this morning. And the supervisors' reaction, I think, was -- continues to be mixed. I think there's clearly still two no votes. Of course, at the last study session, we talked about having one-on-one conversations with Supervisor Dolan, and his position is he's still a no. There was, I thought, some room for him to change that based on our last conversation. However, he's still a no and will remain a no until the people that have been actively contacting him have been convinced that it's a project worth supporting. And so what he's indicated is that there has not or have not been people calling him or contacting him to tell them otherwise. I think he told me, told us, the mayor was in this meeting this afternoon, that one person has contacted him outside of the various public hearings that have occurred on the project. So we have that challenge, apparently, and the people that support the project not contacting Mr. Dolan. I think it's easy for me to be able to say that there's still a lot more work to be done. The subcommittee that's been assembled, which again is a kind of a cross-section of individuals, is going to meet before the next regularly scheduled supervisor meeting in January. And again, we have a lot of work to do in trying to figure out what is it that's missing or what information is not being presented that makes everyone see that there truly is a way for all of these projects to get done for the community's benefit. We heard this morning that roads continue to be the primary desire for improvement for the Mahaska County. I'm a little bit nervous about what that means. I'm nervous about what their plan is, and I'm not sure that it's necessarily going to deliver a project or an end result that really makes a difference. That's a, from an operational standpoint, from my perspective, that's a scary, scary thing to spend all that money and not necessarily have something to show for it. So that's probably a little more op-ed than it is anything else, but we know that we've seen success in projects when you build something. Things that the residents will use, whether they like it or not. Sometimes they don't like it when they go to jail, but hey, that facility was a result of the local option sales tax, and so is the library. So the school, obviously, the school improvements have been substantial and have made a world of difference for our community. So where does that leave us? I think, again, as elected officials, I encourage you to reach out to the other elected officials on that board and talk to people. I think you need to encourage them, if you know people in unincorporated Mahaska County, I think it's important that you ask them to speak to their elected representative for or against. I think the idea is that we want to at least see this on the ballot so that people can voice their opinion, yea or nay. I don't know if I have anything else, Mayor, but that's my summary.
Yep, that's pretty much got it. The petition that was submitted also triggers the necessity of a vote. That vote, I believe, is going to take place on May 2nd, 2017, or 16, excuse me.
May 3rd.
May 3rd?
Yeah. Which is still, was the original target date anyways. I think we have to, as a group, figure out what our ballot language would be, and then we have to still submit that to the county. Working on, I think the timeline still remains intact, but I want to clarify that with the county. But I didn't ask for action tonight because I think there's just still too much to talk about before I would ask you to vote on ballot language because the numbers could change. I mean, there's just a lot of unknowns right now.
So I'm maybe a little unclear. We say there's no votes at the supervisors, but yet we said the petition does create a vote for the public. If there is a vote now based upon the petition, what are the no votes? What would they be voting no on?
The petition calls for the election. It doesn't set the ballot language. And that's where you, as a group, have said you'd like to see one side of, you know, dollars go towards recreation, really childhood learning center, that type of thing. The county supervisors have, at least two of them, have said they're not interested The county supervisors have, at least two of them have said they're not interested in supporting the funding for the county going towards the Recreation Center. However, they are apparently supportive of infrastructure, road improvement.
Any further thoughts or questions?
And there are representatives here from, from the subcommittee as well. I don't know if you.
Anything to add?
They asked for the city to put money into the Environmental Learning Center.
Anything else? We'll move on.
I guess, excuse me, I'd like to urge you, if you haven't talked to the supervisors, to talk to them about it. Um, it's been back and forth. Um, I'll go talk to Mark again, and, uh, being there today, there's still some open doors. You know, they are starting, I feel, when they talk, to understand there is an area outside of Oskaloosa, that we're all in Mahaska County, that is being represented by the, the people that, kind of, there was, there was a lot of good people speak today in favor of it from the rural area. So I mean, I, I, you know, I think discussion is important. So if you haven't, I'd urge you to go talk to them.
It's interesting that they're focused on infrastructure, but yet they don't see the need for daycare and the growth of this town. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's something that has to go hand in hand, so if you don't have daycare, you can't bring people in, and it's just not going to happen for long-term growth of these towns, so, uh, I, I hope people, yeah, go out and talk to them and do what we can, and I know it was on the table. I know we've said several times, let's work together with that center that they want to put together and lump that all together right out there. So it, it's really not off the table. I, I think they're just set on one, one location. If they get off that location, I think there'd be a lot of people in favor of this project. It'd be a huge asset to both the town and the community, so I'd encourage people to go and talk with them and hopefully, maybe we could strike that. What's that?
What do you mean if they get off that location?
I think they're set on McNeil Park. I don't know this for a fact, but it seems to me like their, uh, Conservation Center that they want to do is set for Neil Park or.
Caldwell.
Caldwell Park, is it?
Caldwell Park.
I think they want to put it there. If, you know, if they, to me, you've got everybody out at the MCRF location, it's there, I mean, it would be such a great attraction to have all of that together in one location.
But if they're remodeling bodies, would they not?
One of the biggest objections I've been hearing is putting the daycare out there. They think the daycare should be, still be centrally located here in town somewhere, at the location of the Y now, or at the Webster Building. And I have a hard time thinking that the cost would be the same to remodel one of those buildings as it would be to build a brand-new one out there. So, and I have a hard time arguing that with the people, I'll be honest with you. I have no objections to the Y and to the half percent going there, but, or the 50% going there, but I have a hard time trying to tell people why they want to put everything out there.
Yeah, and when we looked at, you know, even the firehouse, we looked at, you know, some of those numbers, building new and remodeling here, and we saw that same type of trend. I mean, construction here lately is.
Yes, we also missed the firehouse by about a million bucks, too.
And, and, you know, that is something else, you know.
That's another thing that people keep bringing up to me, too, you know, how close are our estimates, so.
Yeah.
It's tough. It's a tough sell.